We won't pay attention to buzzing. All right, we need a motion to sign, oh, open the select board meeting, we did that, sign warrants.
Motion?
Motion by Nancy, any seconds?
Awesome.
All in favor?
Thanks, best dinner.
Why you not eating dinner?
I'm just busy.
I can turn that fan up or down.
I am so hot, I don't think I'm gonna get cold, it's been so hot all day. Uh, we need, oh, we don't have our minutes motion person, do we?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the eighteen.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I wasn't here for the twenty.
Who wants to make a motion for the special select board meeting that we're having? We were all here but Nancy.
Motion?
Do we have a second, Mark?
No, Mark.
Second.
All in favor?
You can vote on it.
I can vote on it.
You can vote on it.
I can vote on it.
I agree you guys like did it right.
Okay, legal firm engagement letter, so Suzette went ahead and signed the legal firm engagement letter because we had voted to go with that particular firm, I'm asking which one now, but the rest, the right one.
Come in with some.
Drunham Woods. Main Commercial Remembrance Day Representative. Okay, would you wanna come up and present to us up here? Love that dress, love that color.
Thank you, where would you like to be?
Dressed appropriately. You can address the crowd, ask both of us.
How about I just go over here and I get all of you?
Sure.
Um, so, thank you for having me here tonight, my name is Liz Micho. I am the daughter of Joyce and Jeff Maker, who you may know, and the daughter, or the granddaughter of Sid and Alice Maker, so Lubac runs deep in my blood and I'm proud to say that I live here now on Summer Street. And I'm also honored to share with you that I'm able to bring a really special event here to Lubac. Some of you may or may not know, two years ago, my nephew Tyler was lost in a lobster fishing accident. He had just turned eighteen years old, and obviously it was a devastation to our family. Because of that, I would say after a period of really understanding what I needed to do with this, I decided to create a nonprofit organization dedicated to commercial fishing safety. That was incorporated in April of this year, and our focus is on safety education expansion, especially up in Washington County and the true town east, I would say, expansion of curriculum, fishing alone is a big one, for example. Thanks out. And also with, with technology, there's new technology today that people just aren't using or maybe don't know about, different kinds of PFDs, new, new PLBs and things like that, and so I wanna bring that education to the fishing community and evolve it. I'm actually working with a young man in PEA in Nova Scotia who's developing a PFD specifically for commercial fishing. And the last part is on rescue and rescue protocols, and we had some issues, I will say, in the search for Tyler that could've gone a little better, and it's not that the community came together incredibly, and they always do, even if everyone saw Alton Wallace, we participated in that, and what we're trying to do is create a guidebook to help when the community comes together, how can we help channel that really effectively right away? So those are some things we are doing right now. But along with that, I had always planned for seven twenty-one twenty-five, which is the two-year anniversary of Tyler's loss, to basically officially launch Korean Way Hope in a broader, broader aspect. However, my thinking changed quite a bit over the first part of this year, when we lost additional fishermen, the Barretts, the, the Scollopers, you know, Five to Life, and Alton, and so with that, I had decided to do something different, and so I asked the governor for a proclamation to make seven twenty-one twenty-five Main Commercial Fishing Remembrance Day, and I'm pleased to say I got that today.
Wow.
So, yeah, you have it.
Excellent.
Yes, so, we are going to have a ceremony at the Lost Fishermen's Memorial on seven twenty-one twenty-five. It will be at noon, start at noon. I'm honored to say that we're gonna have the Maine Marine Patrol Honor Guard here. We have the option for them to present colors at the beginning, I have a question for the select board about that, because if they do that, the flags at the monument need to be lowered while the colors are presented, and then they can be raised afterwards. If that's a challenge, then we can skip that part and they can do the rest. So we'll have, if our presentation's a color or not, we'll do a welcome to Lubac and to, and to all the people participating. I can share with you that I know, you know, certainly our family are gonna be there, until I had the proclamation, I didn't wanna reach out to other families impacted by this, but we will. I know for sure Representative Tool, Representative, uh, uh, Marianne.
Marianne.
Strout, Representative Strout, Representative Hepler, I've reached out to Mayor, I've reached out to the whole Marine Patrol, the Marine Resources Committee and the leadership of the Maine House, et cetera, so, as well as the governor's office, so there may be someone that, that gets sent from there. I do know for sure Commissioner Carl Wilson from the Department of Marine Resources, who is fairly new, will be here, and I have asked him to read the proclamation, so, so yes, we'll have the welcome, after the welcome, I've asked someone from the Historical Society to give a few words about the memorial, because I've found a lot of people don't know much about it, so we're really trying to share that, and then after that, Commissioner Wilson will read the proclamation, the honor guard will lay a reef at the memorial, and he will have a few words to say, and then we'll shift the agenda, this day is about both remembrance and honor, as well as hope. We're gonna shift the agenda to what are we doing to keep fishermen safe and bring them home? And so I'll do a brief overview of the partners that I've been working with to do that, I have partners signed up to brief on the PFD discount programs that we're doing now, so everybody's aware of that, and families are aware of that. I have another partner signed up to brief on new man overboard systems and do some sort of demonstration, he was hoping to be able to bring his boat, but we don't think it's gonna be completely outfitted in time, but it'll be something, and then there may also be a presentation on the wellness and, and safety initiatives for families, fishing families. We're working towards doing the first one of its kind in Ellsworth in the fall. And then we, we may have them as call to action, we'll probably ask people, many of you may or may not know, in this last legislative session, Tiffany Strout proposed a bill to create a safety fund that can only be used for ambitious investments in commercial safety. I may have Tiffany actually brief about that and then tell people what they can do if they wanna contribute to that, as well as to any of the nonprofits that will be attending that day. And then we'll wrap up the day, so we imagine it's about an hour, and I'm imagining at least sixty people right now probably attending, there may be more once we actually promote. So, I'm excited, I'm, I'm honored to be able to have it here, it means a lot to, to myself and our families, and I hope that you guys are excited about it too.
Fantastic, really wonderful, amazing, amazingly good job, thank you.
Thank you. I did, the only other ask I have is if it could be mowed prior to that Monday?
That has always been a subject we're working on, mowing. Dickie, you think that one?
It'll be taken care of.
Awesome, awesome.
And do you need chairs, probably for some people?
Yeah, I'm going to see if I can, I, I'm, after I got the, the notice today, now I need to go into full motion, I would like a podium and a speaker system and some chairs. I've made arrangements for alternative, if bad weather, we'll go into the Water Street Tavern, and we'll do the program in there, but we'll still lay the reef at the end of the ceremony versus in the middle of the ceremony.
What day of the week is that again?
It's a Monday.
Seven twenty-one?
It's a Monday, yeah.
Perfect.
That's my day off.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I want the listener, I'd like contact information.
Yes, I will give you, I will give you contact information for sure, in fact, I have a list of press that I've been waiting to call, call out to, until I had this proclamation, but I just got it a few hours ago, so.
That's exciting.
Liz, everything you emailed me, I printed off, it's over there on that bar desk.
Okay, yeah, that, and that is all a summary of the whole, like, how it came to be, and the proclamation itself, that's written on there, the words are the same, it just doesn't have the signature and everything like I have now, so we'll have the official one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Alex.
Reset, okay. Try to run through this efficiently, I think everyone's got a copy of little pamphlet together here. June report, I've had two intent to build notifications and only one shoreline zone permit, so it was slow June, but April was fairly busy. I spent a bit of work on the dangerous derelict building report, which I'll get to here in a moment. Working with the planning board on our new permit application, assuming land use ordinance passes, part of that here at the bottom of the page is a reminder to the board that they will need to maybe at some point in time come up with what that price, that D-schedule looks like, just so that if and when the land use ordinance passes, we're able to implement that into the application right away. I'm gonna talk a little bit at the end here about STRs, I've got a lot of calls over the last two months, and by a lot, probably fifteen to twenty calls and emails from real estate agents in particular, asking about STRs and what, how, what we have on the books for regulations regarding STRs, how many cabins can people put on boats and things like that, so.
Thanks.
I want to begin the conversation again, not tonight, but sometime about a possible short-term rental ordinance, I've been working on that Stonington one from before, and I think we're maybe ready after the town meeting to kind of readdress that, so we'll get to that in a little bit. Dangerous, any questions on any, any of that guys? Dangerous buildings report, I went over this last in April, so some of the names have been removed, some are on here with a couple notes, we have a five Tucker lane in town, as I mentioned last time, that's slowly being rehabbed by its future tenant, and I've noticed some work being accomplished there. Peacock Building, in April, I thought that was going to be closed on and sold, I had been speaking to the buyer, didn't think it was gonna be an issue because plans were to renovate it, looks like that's fallen through, so I actually will be reaching out and making some requests for some, for some fixes down there on that building, I haven't gotten to that yet, I didn't realize that the sale had fallen through. Out to twenty-five Straight Bay Road, we talked about that camper out in the road a little bit, I've made some contact with Joel, I'm working on getting a volunteer group together to help move that trailer back for him, so we don't have to put that stress and pressure on him, okay.
That's his time.
Jaclyn Mills, that's eleven Doherty Lane, this was one that Gary had really taken care of a lot with, with the owner there, there is one still derelict trailer out there, so I am trying to work with her to see if we can do something about that, but she has taken care of the majority of the issues, so that's just a phone conversation we're having at this point in time. Frank Tracy, the next page, if you take a look, well, actually, yeah, two pages in, we'll see a letter to Frank Tracy, and then right behind that, a response from him, he intends to sell the property and is in negotiations with that, so the new owner does plan to demolish that property on sixty-six Washington Street, so that's, that's good news.
Good job.
I don't have a timeframe for that at the moment, but it is in the works. Suzanne, Little Foxes since Pumping Station Road was on the list, most of the issues there have been taken care of, she's already boarded up windows and hatched them in, so I'm happy with that, I'm gonna cross that one off. I've got three sixty North Lubac Road, this is a very bad one, pictures, pictures aren't in here, but last time I sent them to you, this building's ready to fall down, so I have sent letters to Jackie Rogers to remedy this. So, I'm at, when I say letters, I'm at the beginning stage of talking to people and, you know, informing them of the issues, not in a rush to get into, you know, legal, threaten people to legal consequences yet, I'm just trying to seek compliance through conversation and letters at the moment, but one letter went out to Jackie Rogers. Gary Remore, that's on Pumping Station Road, we had an issue with a lot of miscellaneous junk back behind one of the trailers, I have met with him, and he has told me he is going to begin removing that junk, so that's good news there. Okay, the next one is, it's Henry's out on Dixie Road, so again, Gary's records show he's tried to get hold of this person a lot with no response, I've sent out a letter, I haven't heard back yet, so I'm just kinda waiting to see where this winds up, I have yet to make contact and.
Isn't that McClure's family?
Yeah.
Just down the hill.
Down the hill, okay.
So McClure hasn't responded?
Um, not yet, but, um, just, you know, I'll have to see when I even sent that out, I'm not sure, so I'll move on here.
It may fall now, I think it is sufficiently considered fall.
I only sent that out on the twenty-third, so that's probably why. Next, we have Lucy Burgess on Johnson Street, don't have anything to report there, I haven't been able to make contact to have.
Talked to Nancy.
Already have, yeah, and the issue there is the, we've had a back porch fall off the structure and was living on the hill. Excuse me?
That was five years ago.
Five years ago, yeah, so there's a family in there now.
Four-legged family.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, before I get to sixty-three Pleasant Street, just, the following pages here are copies of the letters that I have sent to those, those property owners, so you guys have copies to see that.
Thank you very much. That's excellent, thank you.
Sixty-three Pleasant Street, I was asked, last time I was here, in April, to see if there was any possible recourse for the town with regards to aiding or speeding along the cleanup of the property. I reached out to Maine Municipal Association Legal Team and the head of the Fire Marshal's Department for the state of Maine, Greg Gilbert, and had a conversation with him, both of the, both of these conversations came to the same conclusion that they're not aware of any path forward for the town, as the municipality, to push this cleanup, you know, in, in a quicker manner. I had another conversation with, with Dean, and he thinks that his, the individual that will end up with the property may have intention on trying to sell it with the intent of having someone purchase that and clean it up, but I don't have any productive news on that, except, I, I, this isn't news at all, but I do have to say, I don't have any authority as code enforcement officer to require any action on the part of the property owner to clean that up or take any action really, so.
Isn't the EPA already involved?
Excuse me?
Isn't the EPA already involved?
Um, I don't know, the DEP.
I mean, DEP, yeah.
The DEP, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're involved in a sense that they've come and met with me on the property, and they've given the instructions on, as to what to communicate to the property owner when they are ready to begin the process. So the DEP, Fire Marshal, and MMA Legal all kinda say the same thing, which is they're, they're not aware of any path of recourse the municipality can take.
Is it considered a dangerous structure?
No.
It's the asbestos, isn't it?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, we can, we can do something with buildings over a period of time.
Yeah.
If they're not addressed.
It's not really a building anymore.
That's, that's it right there, so Greg Gilbert, the Fire Marshal, he was like, well, you know, you can do this, da-da-da-da-da, to the structure, and I go, there's no structure, it's the debris and the foundation, he goes, okay, 'cause we were reading the main statues and going through them, looking at the definitions, he goes, I don't know what to tell you in that case, if there's no structure there, you can't deem it dangerous, even though it's just a basement. So I, I don't have, I don't know where else I would, how else I would proceed.
Is there an underground basement, is there a basement?
There's an open foundation there, yeah.
Is there possi, could we not push all that stuff in there temporarily?
Probably not, the DEP.
No?
We can't push it in, I, I don't know if.
Cause it's blowing all over, I feel them bad.
We could maybe require someone to cover the, the, the opening, but none of this, none of this can officially legally happen until there's an, an owner of the property, and my understanding from the conversation I just had is, it still hasn't come out of probate quite yet, so, e- even if there was something we could do with requiring that to be covered up, the foundation, I don't know if the DEP would even allow that, probably they would, but it's not something.
What, if the town, town has danger, like, we have a fund, we, we can't go in there and touch it at all, we can't remove it, you know, property, you know, the right way?
It, it, we could, we could.
We could put a lien on the property or something, if the town cleaned it up, you know, if the town went in there and cleaned it.
In the way we do with the dangerous building, I don't, that, that process that exists for dangerous buildings and for towns to go ahead and do that and then recoup it later, I don't know if that exists for this.
Cause I mean, I just, I just know, for me, I hear from lots of people who live around that, that.
I do, that, often, yeah.
Right, you know, and there's belief to that at times, you know, there's.
We should be able to clean it up and then, and then somehow attach it to the value of the property.
Put a lien on the property or something, yeah.
Maybe we should talk to our lawyer, our lawyer about it.
My, my suggestion would be that, I, I think I've exhausted the passive recourse that I can as a CEO on this, I can look into covering up the hole perhaps, but perhaps getting a, a, a hold of the town lawyer might be.
And, and, and maybe getting an estimate about what it would cost to do it.
So the first step would be testing it, and that's just a few hundred dollars, the remediation, assuming it goes positive, which, which it will, that's the big.
Remediation for asbestos, is that the big problem then?
Yeah, yeah.
Do they remove that, like, with heavy equipment and bring it someplace special?
They bring down a group of people that go through it and remove as much of it by hand as possible, and you then send area, the remainder of it on site.
Yeah, that's gotta cost so much money.
I, yeah.
Now, Mike has a question.
One question is brownfield grants, can the town buy it and use a brownfield grant to clean it up, and then after we clean it up, increase our parking in downtown?
I don't know. I'm just throwing that up. I, I don't know what a brownfield grant is.
I think there is, yes, I've seen it.
Start parking.
Yes.
There are grant money.
Do you know how much land is down there?
Well, they can walk.
Oh, they can clean up that far.
That's what it is.
What do you mean they won't walk from the boat ramp?
They won't walk down with the boat ramp and walk up.
From the, yeah, yeah.
Surely, well, they're packed in this on like a boat ramp.
That would be something that would have to be done, you know, in collaboration with the property owner, it could be anyways.
I don't know who that is yet.
I'm just saying, yeah.
Well, I guess it's either like a little.
Let's, let's find out what our legal.
I, I don't know.
Do you have a contact number?
I have contact, yeah.
Reach out in a few weeks and see if, okay.
Are we aware, Town Office, of when properties come out of probate, like in an official capacity, is that?
No, I, I don't know, I know that if it changes ownership.
Yeah.
That they send us a rep and a deed.
Transfer, yeah.
Right.
But I don't know if probate does the same thing.
Could you give us an update at the next meeting?
Yeah, sure, I'll, I'll do a little.
So that we don't dwell on.
Yeah.
The minute stuff that we don't know about.
Certainly, yeah, that's, that's what I can do with that.
Alex, I can try to give you some contact information on people who might move brownfields.
Okay, yeah.
The grant people, yeah, just.
That's fine, he wants to look into it.
I would be willing to look, look into it, yeah, I don't mind at all.
Or I can do it.
Do you have anything else for us?
Just real quick, yeah, so we tossed these four, five pages of letters on here, just for your benefit, I was talking about the short-term rental, and I gave you a copy of Stonington's, this is actually a frequently asked question, which I thought would be really helpful for you guys to look at, because it just kinda breaks down some of those misconceptions or misunderstandings of it, I thought, before I come forward with some, having some protection against wind farms, solar farms, and, and stuff like that, like a lot of other communities do, not bans, but, um, site, site plan requirements.
Glad you're not gonna talk about it.
No, not at all, I, I'm not super hot on this issue, but I think it's important for the town to, you know, just be prepared for things, and again, thi- this is something that Cutler did, they put a moratorium on these things while they're working on an ordinance for it, ordinances are just usually requesting site plans in this small, you know, regulations around the size of farms and whatnot in municipal property. I'll do, we'll come back to this later.
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
We have a similar form here, don't we? Tell me all we have a similar form.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not really.
That would be grandfathered.
Yeah, oh, this isn't, it's not, it's just, um, requesting site plans, it's just asking for more information than we currently get, that's all that it is.
That's a very thorough report, it sounds like you did a lot of work, thank you very much for getting certified, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Culture ordinance, well, I think we did talk to MMA, we talked to our town, new town lawyer, and it felt that, I, if I can speak for.
Please do.
Conclusion, that the petitioners followed the rules in our charter, and that we are going to put the ordinance on the, more on the town meeting, so, and we'll wait to see what the vote is.
Have a copy of?
What, let's copy of the whole, of the ordinance itself?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure it's gonna have to be available for everybody at the town meeting.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it'll be.
Suzette'll get you one.
Yeah, they'll be available for, yeah.
We'll have the.
I have a deadline coming up.
Yeah, I can print it off and copy it off, whatever, and give it to you tonight.
He, he needs it tonight, yeah. So, and with that, one discussion that we took care of before our meeting tonight, we, we have the.
Other business was a recycle, after that.
Oh, right, 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 I forgot, thank you for reminding me. Well, we're gonna sign the town warrant, if we're, if everybody's had a chance to review it. Suzette's given us one that has just a few little red figures in, because it's the final tally, hasn't come in for the last warrant, otherwise it's all set, and it's just, you have the copy you want us to sign?
Oh, shoot, yes, I'm sleeping currently, I'm getting a nap.
Are we still having to comment under the bottom?
I was gonna ask, that can be, yeah, I don't know, has she seen it?
Well, it, well.
We wanna do those individually and vote, either in favor or not, I mean, we may not, we may be in favor of the whole.
Warrant.
I think that, that, the, or, that the, that one should say that it was put on by petitions of the.
Yes, that's, well, that was just my little note and red, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to say that.
No, I think it could say something like.
It just says put on by petitioners, something like that. Yeah, put on by petitioners of the people.
The red to remind me to.
Yeah, so that, that I don't wanna miss, what, what we wanted to say?
Initiated by petition.
Yes.
Initiated by.
Petition. That's, yeah.
Oh, I don't know how to spell it.
P E T I T I O N.
I know how to spell that, initiated, I was having trouble with, by petitioners.
I'm gonna I T on what it means, that's why it was still in red, the red's need change.
Okay, so, do you have a little sticky thing to put on there so we can, you can fix it? No, I want, I want you to remember you gotta do that there.
I will, cause it's still in red.
Here, that's, that's what it's supposed to say.
I'll put it right here in the note.
So can I just, can I just add one thing from that conversation?
Did I finish my signature, did I stop in the middle of Dennis'?
I think yours is done.
And did I do it?
Did she do it, that's what she said.
I think so.
Because I was wondering if I stopped in the middle of my last.
I, can I just, can I just add the one thing that, um.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, the one thing that struck me in the conversation with the lawyer that I think is important, that the people that did that petition are aware of, what the lawyer informed us, is kind of, in a nutshell, because Cook has an existing lease, and has had such a lease, they are considered grandfather, so even if the ordinance passes, and even as it was something we could enforce, which is still in question because water leases are done by state only, even if all that went into effect as the law and the ordinance reads, Cook would be grandfather for the two farms that are present in the water.
Anything going forward.
So like, we really wouldn't be able to stop Cook this time around from those two proposed sites.
Anything going forward.
Anything going forward, we would have to come to a permit, however the ordinance reads.
Just, that's what came out of the conversation today, so I just want people to know that if Cook moves forward, we're not gonna be doing anything.
Well. I appreciate that interpretation by the lawyer, and that's, 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 that's good, that that was performed, there is a clause in there that very specifically outlines what happens when sites are in the process of renewal, the in-between phase.
Yeah.
So, I just, they're, they're just saying the planning board may have a different interpretation of that based on the clauses in the.
Well, the planning board's the one that's gonna be exercising the ordinance, correct?
Correct, yeah, so I just. Correct, yeah, so I just, I'm, I'm just saying that there's gonna maybe a.
And I'll say, I did bring up too, the grandfathering of, is this in fact a previous existing spot? As far as I know, it is.
It is.
Which, which comes to the.
There's actually no term of grandfathering in there at all, it talks about renewals and people that are in the process of.
There is, it did say that there was, that, that, things that were already in existence did not, this did not apply to. So I did read a grandfather, I don't know if they said the word grandfather.
I would question current existence to what their plans are, which.
There's, there's, there's one for interpretation, I guess that's what it comes down to, with all of this.
And I think the problem is, it could involve into a legal dispute, since you can see right here that are, there are two different opinions right in this room.
There's no precedent for, for this aspect of it, it hasn't stood up in this regard, so.
Right.
And I understand what you're implying.
Which, the lawyer then did say.
Which is the reason why we didn't put it on.
Is an interpretation of, it would then be upon Cook.
Yeah.
Not the town.
That's right.
So when we're looking at future potential financial burden, he was emphasizing it's Cook that needs to.
Is, the bear the, yes, the burden of.
Bear the burden of the cost.
Yeah, that would be my understanding.
But we would still have to have legal representation, which would cost two hundred and sixty dollars an hour.
Yeah, there, the, my understanding, my understanding is the head of the foundation commits to the community's funds if things should, that court costs should ever arise as a result of this. They, um.
We're counting on getting those people to pay for the legal costs, Alex.
Contact with, but we could request that in writing or something like that.
That would be good.
So, I'm just putting that on.
That is why we backed away from it, because of the legal ramifications.
Certainly understandable.
And the thing that he did say about that, that was kinda interesting, at the very, very end, he said that, um, cause we were concerned that it would become some kind of litigation, that would become an expense to the town. As much as somebody promises they'll cover your legal fees.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't cover your legal fees.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know.
And it's not, it's not a cheap deal, the town attorneys. Um, but what, what the lawyer did say was that, in a lot of probability, that, you know, it would move through the system and probability or good shot would be that we just ha- don't have that jurisdiction, so it'd be like a moot point.
We wouldn't win, in other words.
Right, you know what I mean, like, they couldn't win, we couldn't win, cause it would be.
It would just go bounce back to the DMR.
Right.
But he was definitely supportive of home rule and thought that we should go forward, we would try.
Absolutely.
Definitely, he, I think he was unenervated.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot to it, that.
Yeah, a little lot to it.
And, and then, you know, the, the reality is, is that the legislature would need to change the law in regards to water leasing, and the legislature would need to do something, so, yeah.
It's a start.
Might be, might be making history, who knows?
Yeah.
Blueback on the map, one way or the other, we've been trying.
Go to a bad.
Okay, so we did have another business, um. We have, we could remove, remove, uh, recycling from, uh, the steward department overseeing and put it in public works, it's been, it's been suggested for a while now, because the recycling person has to report to two people, two heads, which is seriously confusing to him.
And our recycling person doesn't do anything in the sewer anymore, cause Kenny was.
Well, he was reci- he's still reporting to Kenny.
No, but he, but.
And he's reporting to Dicky, so.
But Kenny, Kenny would.
Well, this is the whole point. The point is, recycling in other towns are under public works. So we feel that it would be, uh, the first step in kind of moving the cemetery mowers and the part-time person and the recycling, all maybe in one.
Sure.
One more person to kind of be there in the same hours and, and report to one person.
Can we, can we have that at the next meeting with an updated job description? All the things that would go along with.
Well, I'd like to move recycling into public works before we do a job description. We're not gonna, we're not, I don't think we're planning on doing anything but just moving recycling.
We just need to get it started.
We're just getting it started, we, we can certainly give you a job description going forward. Let's get through the, let's get through the annual meeting with the budget first.
What is the issue, is it just communication?
Pretty much communication.
The walk-around surveys of the town's properties.
Yeah, yeah.
Where it needs to be done, that's always the point.
Oh.
That would be one of the cheaper ways for us to be able to address that issue soon.
Oh, if it was a public work, so, okay, okay.
He's already doing mowing and stuff, so, and. And I think that Dicky also knows about, there's safety issues that have to be addressed to that building, and he's willing to work on that, wow.
The buildings will become DPW buildings, harnessing.
Well, kinda, it's still, it would be listed as recycling, it'd be a separate budget, but, yeah.
But they could, like, fix things.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but they can do it anyway, but, yeah.
No, I think that's a great idea.
As far as ge- getting a job description going forward, I think it's something that has to be thought about, contemplated between now and the winter months, because.
We would pretty utilize the, the current job description criteria to move forward until it's reworked.
Well, uh, I'll make a motion that we put it under, recycling under public works. Do I have a second? Second.
So now he's, the responsibility, Dicky, no longer Bruce, as of this vote?
Yes.
And Bruce has been made aware of this?
I believe we.
I've spoken to him about it.
Yes.
I mean, I just wanna make sure he doesn't get tomorrow morning, whether somebody is or why he isn't doing it.
Yeah, yeah, we've already, we.
That's why I asked.
We did our homework, yes. Any other questions? All in favor? Got some more work for you. By the way, I still just love the sidewalk, love the sidewalk you did on Water Street, it's so great. I just can't wait for the whole Water Street to look like that.
Let's keep the beavers at bay.
Oh, and that, oh, my goodness, that was bad.
Speaking of, speaking of beavers.
Good point, I saw that.
Yeah, well, speaking of beavers, I, I sent an email out the other day, wondering, out to, um.
One eighty.
Right.
Yeah, just past Sean's, right?
Right, look across from Diane and, and past Sean.
Yeah.
Is, has we made, have we made contact with DOT, the warden service, anybody?
That's kinda rode that road, been.
Well, I mean, I mean, we saw what would happen the other day down Boot Cove Road and that. I mean, that, when that backs up after a heavy rain, it goes across Randy Hall's drive.
Yes, I don't know if Dicky has contacted, but I haven't.
Cause that's a big one, it's probably pretty good.
He may have.
So can we, can we have something for next meeting, like an update as to what they're gonna do if they come to look at it?
If I do something.
Whose property got?
I know where the lawyer, they're.
Who owned the property that it back, used to be?
It was on Randy's.
Okay, I thought you probably did.
You go down across his Robert, where you're all.
Who's, whose property was, that the beavers did, brought?
No, that was on Boot Cove.
On one eighty.
It was on Boot, the one on Boot, who's, where was that dam, was that on Randy's or?
I'm not sure, but I tried to walk up in there so far, and it just, it, it, the overgrowth was so bad and then the way the water.
Well, is it fixed? It's still flooded?
No.
No. That's why I take those evening rides, we have to go together sometimes.[1676.02]